Good, how are you, Chief?
Well.
I see, I see my baby's back and it's...
It's back, yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
Concerned.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
They got it back.
It was uneasy to...
Natalie, it's been a long time.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I know.
I recognized you when I saw the Esri.
We're talking today.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So, it sounds like you're just doing some interesting things. Yeah, yeah. Good. Things going better with...
Yeah, because... Yeah, worked out. They were able to get all the data. Yeah, and the guy, uh... But like, the manager, and then, and then they have a guy who does G I S stuff. But I guess insights is going on.
It is, it is. But we are coming back.
Something else.
Just to get used to your...
Okay.
Jack, the owner. He's strong in our business. So, we're actually...
Gotcha.
Like, if you find this, you want this.
Okay.
You want this.
Here. Oh, it's got a... Yeah. I love how he's got it. I'll take him.
Really, really. Yeah, 'cause I use it off and on. You know, it took kind of what you guys had, and then he was able to replicate it all. And then he sent me an email recently, and he's going away, you all need to look into...
There's some other things that... It was so great.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah. They do like this. Part of being a man.
Yes, yes. And the level presents that day.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
So, that they're going to incorporate all of that, so it's not like it's completely just might be a little...
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry you did too.
Experience builder, disk, like most likely, Microsoft, um...
Looking at Power BI.
Power BI might be the, like, do...
All right, it's, uh, seven o'clock. We're getting, okay. It's like we're good to get started, we're online, and, uh, we lost a council member. He was here a second ago. We do have a quorum. Um, he must've just stepped out for a second. I looked down and looked back up. Um, yes, ma'am, would you please read? I'm sorry, Diane.
Yes, uh, the city council met in closed session regarding labor negotiations, and the labor bargaining groups are listed in the agenda, and information was received and direction was given to staff. I have no other announcements.
Thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, uh, let's go ahead and call this thing to order, and we'll catch up with everybody once they come back. Oh, there we go. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'll take role. Councilmember Spencer Wong.
Present.
Councilmember Popescu.
Here.
Councilmember Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Pretium Daily.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Popescu.
Go ahead, bow our heads, and then we'll do a pledge of allegiance. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity for us to live in this amazing country, beautiful state, and quiet city. We ask that you bless us as we discuss the various opportunities that we have in our city, that we may make wise decisions and be further educated about all the opportunities we have. Just name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Moving on to public participation, this is when anyone from the public wishes to speak on any non-agendized item. I'm looking at my list, I don't see any, so I think we're good. Nobody's running down. Scott? Okay. I gotta, I'll, I'll pick on Scott today, so...
Thank you.
All right. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on. If we have any conflicts of interest, we'll, we'll disclose those when needed. Uh, beginning with 2A, we have a presentation by ESRI, and Natalie and Jen Hall.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting us here today. We're really excited to talk with you about some of the tools that you guys have access to now. Um, so we'd like to go ahead and do, so who are we? Some, some people might already be aware of who Esri is, but we are based in Redlands, started in 1969. We do geographic information systems, mapping, and SaaS products, that's what we build, and we're used by a lot of government agencies, commercial agencies, nonprofits, et cetera, and we are a global company. So, really excited to be very close to Loma Linda here. So, my name's Natalie Carter, I am your account manager. Um, but my history goes back much further than that with Loma Linda. That's my parents, they came here from Texas for my dad to go to dental school, he graduated in 1978. I also graduated from the academy in '03, and then went on to work at, uh, the medical center after graduating from La Cieira University. I also had my son here, um, I actually have a picture of him in a shirt that my mother saves, she saves everything, um, that I was given when I was born at the medical center as well. I also, uh, you can see here, that's where we work, I also want to continue with the debate of Linketts versus Big Franks. I am Linketts, for those of you who are aware of that debate, ongoing. Um, I know, I know. Um, I'm an account manager for the San Diego region as well, as well as Riverside County, Orange County, et cetera, but very excited to be able to support you all as well. Jen Hall.
Thanks, Natalie. Hi, my name's Jen Hall, I'm a technical counterpart, working closely with Natalie. Thank you. I don't have any Loma Linda relationship. The closest one I've ever been was starting with University of Redlands, which is closer to Loma Linda, and that's where I finished my first master's science degree, University of Redlands, and I eventually joined, um, Esri, which is on Redlands. And the one thing that I really like about the Loma Linda is there is a Starbucks that serves a Clover coffee brewing system, which I love, so every time I drive up to Redlands, this is my permanent stop in Barton Road and Mountain View, make sure that I get this coffee. So, that's my best Loma Linda experience I have so far. And, yeah, happy to be here today, and then I'll pass it on to Natalie to continue our story map navigation, um, journey.
Yeah, so, this tool that we're using here is, is a story map. So, we're using that to show you this information, this is actually a tool that you guys have access to, and I know we've already started some discussions around ways you can use story maps, I know we've talked with Jarvan and Andy and Henry, um, but we want to show here how you can use them. Um, this is just some examples, and we'll go into some others as well, but it is a way to showcase maps with images and video and text, and just ways to show projects you have upcoming, um, any other things that might be changing at the city, you can use a story map to showcase that. Um, so we actually started down the road of an art tour, I know you guys are interested in using that, we've already started some meetings around that. I actually used Quick Capture and took a walk. So, I took a walk, took some pictures of the artwork you guys have, of areas I was aware of already, and we thought this was a great way to showcase, you know, art for those who aren't aware of the art that you guys have. Took some pictures with my son, he absolutely loved walking around and posing with the, with your artwork, um, and so just, just took a walk and, and did that, but you can definitely use this to expand, put information about the artists, about the pieces of artwork themselves, and showcase that to those who are coming in and visiting the city, those who are residents who may not be aware of this art, you know, they might see some of the pieces, but they might not be aware of the one by Holder Crook's Park or, or some of those others. Another one that I know, you know, is something definitely to be proud of is that City of Loma Linda is a blue zone, right? And how can we really highlight that more? And you can use a story map to do that. This is some videos and stuff that we had found that had already been shared, but, you know, maybe reintroducing that for those who aren't aware, I mean, you know, this came out, I remember, many years ago, and I don't know how much is talked about anymore, but maybe reeducating in, in those who are looking to come live here, you can use this as a, as a reason for people to come live, and highlight those, those areas of why Loma Linda is a blue zone, and what makes that so special. So, these are just some other pieces of information that we had found that, um, you know, might be of interest. Also, very well-known, at least in our area, is plant-based diet, my son with my two favorite veggie meats, scallops is my number one, I know you were wondering. Um, just ate them tonight, actually. Uh, and then if we keep going down, um, you know, and, and a lot of residents in Loma Linda are very active, right? They like to walk, they like to bike, so we took the trail maps that you guys have, and we put it on a 3D base map, and you can see here where, you know, you can understand if they're easy, medium, difficult, so people will know what it, what they can do before they even get there. Maybe that way they don't, they either know they can do it, and they can go farther, or they can go shorter and then do harder, harder bikes, bike trails or, or walks. So, this is data that we actually pulled, thank you, Henry. Um, another area that we want to highlight are infographics, a lot of people know Esri is a mapping company, which we are, that's what we were started with, but we also provide demographic data, we have a team of demographers, and they actually pull together census data, purchase data, all of that in, and pull it together. Now, this is something called Business Analyst, we are actually taking the capabilities of Business Analyst and adding it into the technology that we have, so it's been historically a separate product, we're now bringing it in, and the City of Loma Linda will have access to that in the next month or two with the licensing you already have, so we wanted to highlight that you guys can soon use this data. Now, you might be, have some access to this data already in other ways, you might be doing surveys, some of that kind of stuff, but hopefully this will make it so you guys have access to it now and use it to enrich the data that you already have. So, this is an infographic. Um, we also wanted to show tapestry, so tapestry is a way to segment a population, right? So, this is Loma Linda's primary tapestry that we did for the entire city, you can definitely go down to, uh, block levels, um, your primary tapestry, Bright Young Professionals, but there's multiple tapestries that make up the city of Loma Linda.
So, what is Bright Young, so if you describe Bright Young Professionals, what group would you say, like?
Yes.
So, I'm pretending, I don't know.
Yeah, so that's definitely a very good question, so it's, it's single-family professionals, median age is 36, so it's a lot of this information, right? And you can actually get down, it says it's, it's part of the bright, or it's, uh, let's see, it's part of the middle-ground life mode, right? So, there's a lot of different information with tapestry that you can really do, but yes, it would be somebody like yourself.
And this is like the dominant in Loma Linda?
Dominant in Loma Linda, the whole city, but you can actually go down into much smaller groups.
So, like your districts, right?
Mm-hmm. Districts down to the block level.
Politician.
No, this is for...
I have a question, when, when you're, um, is it demographer?
Mm-hmm.
When your demographers are looking at this data, are they including student data?
We can actually, we, we'd have to pull that up, I would believe they would. Um, we actually have all the information that's in this, we actually have it all documented, so you can see what's part of that. So, when you are making decisions, you are very well aware of what's there.
Okay, 'cause I think that's, that's a question I've always had, is, yeah, do we really incorporate the student population here?
And I think what we could do is maybe take that question back and see what they actually include in that, and get back to you on that. So, 'cause I don't want to give you the wrong answer, but, um, they, yeah, and I appreciate that. So, we, we definitely want to make sure, but it was very interesting to me that this was your primary for the entire city, but maybe if we zero in into maybe the areas around the university closer, there might be different...
Right, and that, that could explain some of it, but the other thing is, I, I think what, you know, we've been, I don't mean to interrupt your presentation, but...
No, please.
We've been known for a long time as kind of this older aging community, but as people eventually move on, or they're no longer with us, they're replaced by younger and younger people, and I've said for a long time, I, I don't think Loma Linda now is recognizable as it was 20 years ago.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and that's also why I was surprised when I saw this primary one, because I expected a very different one, uh, we have one that's called Golden Ager's, that kind of stuff, and I was thinking the same thing, and I was born and raised here. So, I definitely think that this changed my view, just doing this, pulling this tapestry. But, yeah, we can definitely look into, into that. And then another infographic that we pulled was around the employment. Again, this is at the city level, can definitely go down, it's interactive, so you can actually click on it, explore more, and these are all things, um, you know, you could put on, into a story map on your website, showing those, uh, demographic pieces of information. Here, obviously, health, not a surprise that that's a big one, but you might be more interested in some of the, um, other ones as they go up in percentages. And those are just some of the infographics, we have way more infographics that you can pull demographic.
What's the business part of that one, like, that infographic? See how it says business?
Oh. The total businesses?
So, 676 total businesses. But the majority, and then the other one is the employment, where they're so, yeah, I can't see that business.
So, what, when we started looking at some of this, what we found is that the businesses were typed based off of address, so while, uh, like, Loma Linda, you, University Health System might have multiples of that, what we were thinking is that they were typing it by the address, right? Because you got the FMO and, and all the different, uh, parts of it, that are all different addresses.
And your commuters is how, that's for work, right? So, your employment, so majority of our people are commuters, drive alone. And the time they spend.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can definitely explore more and, and go into smaller regions of Loma Linda, there's a lot we can do with this, and, you know, this is just pulling it all together, we can do the, the data itself, right? This is just kind of bringing it all together, we can do much more, uh, deep dive, can get lost in this data, I will be honest. So, then the other thing we wanted to do is actually show you some story maps that other cities have done, so this one here is the Palm Desert one, which I know Andy helped to lead from when he was at, uh, Palm Desert, and this is one that, you know, they really done a lot with, they wanted to showcase the amazing art that they have, they put in information about the artist, about the piece of artwork itself, right? And then this way, as they have visitors, they can figure out what art they might want to go see while they're there, or encourage them to come from maybe Palm Springs and other areas where they might be mainly staying, and they could come over to Palm Desert. So, this is one of the story maps we wanted to show, especially, we know that you guys are, are looking to do a story map around art. Another one we want to show is one that City of Ucaipa has done. Now, they are looking to update their freeway specific plan, when it was created many years ago, Ucaipa doesn't look the same, right? Most of this area doesn't look the same from that many years ago, and so what they wanted to do was, um, educate the residents on what it was looking like, and then what they're looking to change it to. And so, they've put all of this here, they even put in a survey, um, in which they wanted, uh, residents to fill it out and give information, but also give their opinion. So, this is something that you can build into a story map or put it on your website.
Natalie, do you know what software they used for the survey?
Survey 123, which you guys have access to.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, another one is City of Riverside. So, as you can see, they have demographic information here, they've used this to encourage businesses to come set up shop, right? So, they wanted to focus in, and so you can see, they start out with a larger map, and then they start focusing in, um, if you go down to, yeah, uh, Tyler Mall, right? So, they've got a lot of, maybe some empty areas around it or within the mall, and they wanted to show the demographics so that people in the area, um, like, they can see what possible clientele and why they should be there. So, this is another way that you can use story maps to encourage business growth. And then the last thing we wanted to show is your own data hub. This is something that Henry has created and done a really good job, good job, Henry, been here 35 years, you guys have a wealth of information with him and experience. Uh, we meet with him and Andy on a monthly basis, we actually have a meeting tomorrow morning, and we just connect in about what you guys are doing and how we can help support. Um, one of the things that we know that you guys probably have a lot of traffic to is parcels, right? A lot of people are always interested in parcels, and so here you can look at those parcel maps, and you can even chase, change the base map and provide more context to those parcels themselves. But there's a lot of exploration you can do here as needed. Um, but, yeah, so, thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to continued partnership with you all. Thanks.
The link to this is on the main city webpage? Because the only way I'm gonna really fully understand this is to get in and start playing with it, unless you've got a special tutorial at Esri.
We do, we can always have calls as well.
It requires a computer, I don't think you can get it from an apicus. I'm joking, I'm joking.
Yeah, fair enough.
Natalie, this one, is this on our, just ignore that?
This side of the dais is a little sensitive about all the aging stuff that, uh, the mayor brings up.
The owner of our company is still, uh, who is our company? Jack and Laura Dangerman, and they started it in 69.
And, uh...
Dangerman's Nursery, I remember.
Well, that's his brother.
Yeah, his parents did, and then his brother, uh, but Jack and Laura continue to run our company to this day.
And you will occasionally run into Jack eating downtown Redlands, and just, he's just a normal guy.
Yep.
Very, very nice guy.
But this, this Natalie is not on our website, it's what you've made.
We built this story map.
Yeah, they just made this.
No, I understand, but access to the data that, that you used to develop this, yeah.
Yeah, the hub site right here, this is on your website.
Or are you thinking of the business analyst? He likes the, the which data?
I think you guys are all looking at the political stuff, you wanna, you wanna look at voter info.
Well, that too, that too. I'm up for reelection in a year, so, yeah, I want to know that too.
The other, I think he's meaning the, the infographics that you showed, yeah, the, with the data.
Okay, yeah, so that'll be available to you guys soon, and I think something Henry can help get you access to, but we're also happy to, if you want to just meet, we can meet.
I'll keep in touch with Andy and trust that he's gonna, yeah, he sounds like the pro from Dover, so that'll work.
Yeah, however, we can help.
Okay, thank you very much, good presentation, I enjoyed it.
Thank you, thank you.
You didn't touch any all on, on like, just mapping and stuff like that, too, I mean, it's, you guys do...
Well, there were maps all through.
I, I, well, I know, but...
Sorry. Was there any questions you had about?
No, I just...
So, you're just giving me a hard time?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
Um, when, I, I will tell you a quick story, when I, um, I worked, worked for the Sheriff's Department, obviously, when I worked in another city that's a, a very big client of yours, um, further west, may have an R and a C in it.
I don't know that.
Um, anyway, we, uh, we actually developed an application to look at our traffic citation data and overlay that with where our collisions were happening. I have a big personal belief that, that tickets should only be written to reduce collisions, that's, that's where I think the original intention was, and so when I ran the traffic division out there, we, we came up with, um, an application to basically measure what our efficacy was in terms of issuing citations to reduce collisions, and we would overlay to make sure that that was all lining up, and it was a, it was kind of a, um, it was a, it was an interesting change in process, because, you know, a lot of, a lot of my profession, we just get into, hey, we're just gonna go stop speeders and whatnot, and I think that's, that's not productive. So, um, but I'm very familiar, I spent time doing presentations at your UC conference and all that kind of stuff, too, so...
Nice, fantastic, so you were working with Solomon?
I was working with Solomon, Solomon the man.
Yeah, he's the man.
Yeah, Solomon's a good man.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's awesome, and, uh, excited to hear about that, I hadn't heard that one. So, I used to work with Rancho Cucamonga quite a bit when I did Health and Human Services at Esri, so, 'cause you guys were doing a lot.
Yeah, there was a lot of, a lot of really neat, innovative stuff, I'm sure it's still going on, I haven't been there for a while, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, 2B, another amendment to our municipal code.
Hello, hello, good evening, how am I supposed to follow up story maps? That's, this is gonna be a hard sell and very boring.
You could've done some visual presentation on this.
No, we gotta talk about timing again, Lynette, that's... Um, yeah, so I'm here to talk about, uh, adopting the new fire maps that CAL FIRE came out with, uh, earlier this year. Um, they were supposed to release them last year, fell behind, and then they came up, and then they were supposed to release them January this year, we know about the Eaton Fire and Palisades Fire, that delayed it again, and they came up with this system to release them systematically throughout the state, so Northern California started first, they're done with their adoption process, it's made its way down here in Southern California now. So, we can move along, Andrew Dryce, use the clicker, awesome. So, we're gonna hear talking about the fire hazard severity zones and the map that CAL FIRE came up with for the city of Loma Linda that we are required to adopt by ordinance.
Is it required to adopt?
Yes. But, I'm just giving you the info and then...
Forma, okay.
Yeah, uh, giving you the info on it, um, it's only 74 slides, so we'll get done here in about an hour and a half, so. So, what are the zones? The maps are required by government code 51178 and 517, 51179, and those identify the levels of fire hazard into three levels, moderate, high, and very high. Prior to this, uh, when the last maps were adopted in 2008, you just had very high fire hazard ver- severity zone, now they've broken up into these three different levels, that's one of the differences in this adoption. Uh, how are the zones determined? The very, very smart people, scientists at CAL FIRE, used a lot of weather data, topography, slope, uh, ember forecast, wind data for many, many years for our local area, and for all the areas within, uh, California, to determine what, uh, our, the fire hazard severity zone would be for Loma Linda and our South Hills. Um, so they used fire history, vegetation, the flame link, blowing embers, um, that's a big one, that's a new, ember casting is a new thing that they brought in their modeling, that's been a big issue with, uh, a lot of the fires in the wildland urban interface area, though the Eaton and Palisades Fire, I mean, granted, the winds are crazy, they had, uh, ember cast going over two miles, that's why you had fires in, like, the Pasadena area, burning in residential zones and commercial zones is because of that ember casting. So, that was something they brought in their data as well for these new fires. Uh, let's see here, this is just gives an overview of some of the updates of what they've done from the last map update in 2008, slope is a big factor in fire behavior as well, so they took that into account as well, local fire weather was a big thing, and then again, firebrand production, transport model using discrete local wind vector distributions in our local area. So, instead of doing something global, they got very specific.
Could you repeat that?
Yep, that's new firebrand production and transport model using discrete local wind vector distribution, I could say it three times fast, yeah.
I got, I think I got it that time.
Can you explain, I, I mean, this is an issue that there are people in my district that have had their insurance policies canceled.
Yeah.
And they're having a lot of difficulty getting insurance, and so these are issues I need to understand.
Sure.
So, if you can, if you can explain that last bullet, so I understand what it means.
So, kind of what they did is they took the wind direction, the wind speed and all that, plus with the vegetation, the types of fuels and vegetation we have in the area, and they modeled how far potentially those embers from the trees and the crown fires could potentially be cast and transported deep into the residential areas to start structure fires within the residential areas. So, they were able to model if you have a 30 mile per hour, 30 mile per hour wind in this vegetation, going this direction, how far do the embers potentially can go into the residential area to start structure fires? So, that's kind of, in layman's terms, what that is.
So, help me with a question I've, I've heard multiple times.
Yep.
And, and that is, uh, uh, most of the homes in the district I represent are tile roofs.
Yep.
Uh, I've had a number of constituents that say they have, I'm trying to understand this, but it's supposed to be heat prevention, fire prevention, paint, they have their houses painted with it.
Yep.
And they keep their trees trimmed and bushes trimmed, and they're wondering why they can't get insurance, or they can now, I guess the state's kind of pushed that, um, but there's frustration.
Absolutely.
So, is that, any of that taken into account?
Not with this map, and that, it's a good segue into something I was gonna bring up.
Okay.
These maps, CAL FIRE says you have to adopt them, right? Because they, they spent all the money and time... Because they, they spent all the money and time in doing the science and the data to provide these maps. People are losing their insurance not because of these maps, insurance companies, they're in the, is there anybody in the insurance company in this? They're, they're in the, they're in the business for money, right? So they have their own much more liberal maps and scientists that have produced maps and models for them, for their, for the actuaries and deciding if they're gonna insure you or not. It's not based off of these maps that CAL FIRE puts out. Insurance companies have their own internal maps that they decided, you're too high of a risk, we're not gonna insure you. That's why California came up with the California Fair Plan, it's not very fair because it's very expensive, but they had to give something. There's a big struggle way above my pay grade politically at the state level too with the insurance commissioner, and that's why some of the insurances are pulled out of California because of reimbursement rates and that kinda stuff as well, or what they can charge rates to residents. And the losses they've taken on some of these historic wildfires too have been tremendous. So your constituents in your district, they're being told by the insurance companies, the insurance company have their own maps internally, it's not based off of these maps from CAL FIRE. Yeah, and to answer your second question about the tile roofs and the vegetation, we'll talk a little bit of this in, in the PowerPoint, but that's huge. Tile roofs are great, but they're seeing a lot of the wildland, or sorry, structure fires in the wildland urban interface areas start because of attic fires, it's because of the embers and the firebrands getting in the attic spaces through open eaves and the, and the attic vents you have, the whirlybirds, the attic vents, those are big enough to allow embers to get in there and then it gets in the insulation, you're off to the races and your roof and your attic's on fire and then your house is on fire, so that's how those are starting. So tile roof is great, but that's just one part of it. It's tile roof plus the dual pane windows that kinda help against with them blowing out because of the heat, the flame reflective paint is big, but the number one thing that's gonna protect a home, and when I worked on the fire, and I'm sure Chief Harker, Chief Harker will agree, is defensible space around the home with your vegetation management. So the state's pushing here pretty shortly, and I'm sure it's gonna come to Loma Linda at some point too, it's called a Zone Zero, where you can't have any vegetation within the first five feet of your home. They've done a lot of studies showing, you know, shrubs, trees, ornamental plantings, even in pots, start, you know, smoking and they catch on fire and then that catches the rest of the house on fire through the attic vents and the, and the open eaves. So they're pushing this big Zone Zero in the first five feet of your home, then so much, you know, the 25, 50, 100, your 100 foot dispensable space. But I know when I was on fires, you'd see one home that's standing, one home that's down, it's usually because of the landscape maintenance and the defensible space they had to give the firefighters a chance to extinguish the fire around the home and also the, the ability to not have the flames get right up into the home with the, with the vegetation. Did that answer your question?
Largely.
Okay.
The only remaining part of it is, is the new home, the new housing developments that we're doing in Loma Linda.
Yes, sir.
Like the Lennar Homes down off California. I mean, there's barely five feet between the homes.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, they're not in the very high fire hazard severity zone, and they're not in the new maps either, so they're outside of the area. The new development that we have getting built by TruMark out in San Timoteo Canyon, it's also not in the very high fire hazard severity zone in the new map as well. So we can't condition them when they're being built to meet Chapter 7A of the Building Code to meet some of those construction standards for those areas, because they're outside of it, if that makes sense. It'd be an overreach at that point.
I have other questions I could ask, but we can deal with...
Okay, I'm happy to ask or answer them, so keep firing away. All right, so how do they decide what's wildland versus non-wildland in these zones? This kind of explains it here, you have agricultural area, urban, and then your wildland. They, they score them independently, this is all a lot of stuff that CAL FIRE does to kinda break those zones up. I was just having a discussion with the council member here, zones are areas with relatively, I'm gonna say homogeneous slope and vegetation, I know some people pronounce it homogeneous, what, what do you, I'm taking a bet, what are we going with? Homogeny? Genius, okay, homogeneous, all right. Slope and vegetation, so that's, that's kinda how they determine if it is a wildland zone versus non-wildland. The map's very scientific, it's at a 30 meter resolution, scores are averaged within the zone, so they take the zone, they score it, and the wildland is scored independently of urban and agricultural zones, and the urban zone scored using additional models and steps, which we'll get further into in the PowerPoint. So for just specifically wildland fire hazard severity zones, it has to be a minimum of 200 acres, the burn probability of that 200 acres is based on fire occurrences from 1991 to 2020, so they use historical fire data to kinda come up with the probability again of a fire occurring in those zones, the fire intensity, the vegetation type, the slope, again, slope plays a big factor in wildland fires on the rate of spread, and then local fire weather, how hot, dry, windy are the worst conditions is a given location based on a two kilometer data from 2003 and 2008, or 2018, sorry. So they took all that data, they put, they crunched it in those zones, and they decided in what are the wildland fire hazard severity zones for each jurisdiction. Now for the urban areas, it has to be a minimum of 20 acres, isolated islands of vegetation embedded in a non-wildland area, we have a lot of non-wildland in area here in the Loma Linda, they did again, ember production's the big one, how far it can spread into the residential area based on the wind speed and direction. And then it's based on the most extreme fire weather at a given location, so they went historically from 1991 to 2020, what's some of the worst wind events we've had here locally, and then they modeled those ember casts based on the vegetation, the wind speed, how deep into our residential areas it could potentially get to based on the vegetation height and the wind speed. So with the fire hazard very zones, what is the map for? And to your credit, Councilmember Daly, it's, it helps enforce building standards for new construction, again, I'm saying new construction, we can't retroactively go back and have people who have already built, come up to the standard, but new construction, Chapter 7A of the California Building Code, that's your, your closed box, these, your attic vents are a certain diameter to prevent embers from getting into them, your, your vegetation management plan, your fire department access specifications and all that. So that helps enforce Chapter 7A. The other thing that we're having to do, AB 38 inspections, so if you guys have sold a home in the last couple of years in the fire hazard severity zones, we now have to go out and do a hazard disclosure before you close escrow. So we go out, do an inspection of the property, say, hey, you have these issues, they need to be mitigated before close of escrow, it's something the state came up with to kinda make the new buyers aware, a kind of a buyer beware type of an amendment. These are the, the map on the left is the new map that's gonna be adopted, the map on the right is the old, or on the right is the old one, that was adopted in October of 2008. The, the zones haven't changed a whole lot, it's extended a little bit further into the city, but not by much, honestly. The big difference is now we have the moderate, high, and very high, so you got moderate with the yellow, high, orange, very high in the red. That's kinda what's changed the three zones, it is a little bit deeper in the city compared to 2008, I mean, 2008, so is Arnold Schwarzenegger as the governor on the map, so it's been a while since CAL FIRE's come up with these new maps. The other big thing about the new map with the three zones is there are some properties where they're a little bit in the red, a little bit in the orange, when that happens, based on the new ordinance, you're gonna default to the highest severity zone, not to the lowest, so you'll go to the red, the very high fire. So if you have, if your backyard's red, but your front yard somehow falls in the orange zone, your, your property's gonna default to the very high fire hazard severity zone, the highest one. So our timeline, I, we created a website on our city website, a separate link with information for residents to allow for public comment starting April 1st, it gave some information about why, the why we're having to adopt these maps, it gave information on how to make public comment and let their voices be heard. We only received one comment, it wasn't from a resident, it was from a, and they did it to all of the jurisdictions in there, it's called the Building Industry Association of Southern California, they sent out a very generic email to all the jurisdictions that if you're going to make the maps more restrictive, no city has done it in our area yet, but there are agencies up in the north that decided they wanted to make their maps more restricted, so bring it further into the areas. This group wanted to be able to come to the city council meetings and make their voices heard on how it's gonna be expensive for homeowners to develop and all that stuff. That's who they represent, are the home builders. That was the only public comment we received based on these new maps. We're here tonight, May the 13th, and then the next hearing will be on June 10th to formally adopt it. After we adopt it, I, we have to send it to the Board of Forestry, and then Lynette has to post it to a few governing bodies in the county as well. Yes, sir.
Who was the notice of the regarding public comments sent to and what was the vehicle to communicate it?
One more time, I apologize.
What's that? Who was it sent to?
So we sent it via...
What kind of notice as a homeowner, what kind of notice did I receive about this and request for public comment?
Yeah, we, we did it in the public areas, the post office, in front of City Hall, we did a social media thing, and we put on our website as well. Those were the requirements to publicly, or to notify the public about the maps. Again, I hate to say it, it's, there's really no, there's no option, we're required by state law to adopt it, there's no, we can't get out of it. And number two, the, the homeowner's concerns about the insurance, these maps don't affect that.
The reason I'm raising the issue is, is that a lot of the homeowners in my district have lived in their homes for a long time.
Yes, sir.
They look more like me than like you.
Understood.
And I don't know how many of them go to the post office and look at the notices. Yeah, none of them. And, and some of them, I mean, everybody's on the internet to some greater lesser degree, but I, I think the vehicles that you use are current and future. I've got a lot of people live in my neighborhood that are, are evolving from the past.
Okay.
And I'm a little perplexed, you only had one comment, because I've had a number of constituents in my, in my area that have complained about the insurance issue I already raised.
Okay.
And I guarantee you, some of those people would be, are asking questions that I don't always have good answers to.
Okay.
And the fact that there was only one comment, in my view, makes me suspect that it's, it's the communication channels not working.
Okay.
So I think we at least need to look at that.
Okay.
I don't have a solution, I like to offer solutions when I ask questions, but, but I think, you know, if there was a notice on a bill of some sort or something, but I just think that needs to be explored.
Okay.
Because I can tell you, there are some people, it's, I'm not talking big numbers, but there are a number of people that are pretty hot about this when their insurance gets canceled.
Sure.
And they're hunting around trying to find, and of course, they have to pay much more exorbitant rates than they're accustomed to paying.
Yep.
And they feel like they've tried to do the right thing to mitigate fire risk.
Yep. Yeah, and, and I can appreciate that, that they're, they've done it on their own, there are things that the city can do as well to help potentially bring down rates, like a community wildfire protection plan is one thing that the, the city can do to, to show preparedness, and some insurance agencies will offer a rate discount if the city has one of those formally adopted. So there's, there's vehicles as well to potentially ease that burden, but everything comes at a cost, right? But, yes, sir.
Last week, I, I heard a presentation actually by Dan Muncie and some others, kind of a similar topic of this, but they mentioned what you just mentioned, somebody from the insurance industry was there and mentioned that.
Yep.
How, how do we go about looking into a program like that? Something to do about neighbor, it's like a neighborhood watch.
Yeah, there's two vehicles, there's a community wildfire protection plan I put in for a grant, so hopefully we'll see what happens with that. The other thing you can do is Firewise Communities, but that doesn't really fall in the city, I can help organize, but that's local groups, like HOAs typically, that go in, they come together, they form their own Firewise councils, and then they take elements out of the community wildfire protection plan, and they come up with their own very specific regional plan on how they're going to battle hard in their neighborhood for wildfire. That's another thing, you go through the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, get that formally approved as well at a neighborhood level, so it's usually HOAs that take on, take that on.
But those steps can reduce insurance rates.
Yes, the, the community and planning captain spoke with that CAL FIRE, he did a presentation in the Fire Marshals, he, he wouldn't tell us that he promises it will, but there's been a lot of insurance agencies that have seen the effectiveness of it and showing that you're being prepared and being proactive to reduce wildfire risk, and, and they are giving discounts, yes. He wouldn't, he didn't feel comfortable making that known publicly, if that makes sense, but the other areas that he's helped with these Firewise councils have seen a reduction in insurance premiums.
But we can't initial, initiate that as a city, that has to be like neighborhood groups.
Our first step, no, our first step would do the community wildfire protection plan, because a lot of those Firewise councils are gonna need a lot of those elements out of that plan to adopt their own plan. So if we're really gonna want to start something like that, that'd be the first step to help those local organizations move forward on that.
Okay.
We can promote it, we, I can help give literature and, and direct them on how to fill out the applications and get started, and we can provide the, the facilities for them to meet and come up with their ideas and plans, but we as a city don't drive that.
We don't have any HOAs in our hazard areas.
I think we do in the Anderson Way area. Yeah, so there are a few HOAs, yep.
Okay.
So that is Councilman Daly, oh, it's a QR, if you want to...
I'll help, I'll help, I'll help. Get your phone out.
If you wanna get your phone out, I can take a snapshot with your photo, with your camera. Now, if you wanna take this link down, sir, and give it to anyone that asks, that, CAL FIRE created a whole website explaining the process and why they're doing this, and if you have anyone else that wants questions, I'll run to my office real quick and leave you a stack of business cards, please give them out, you don't need to fight that battle, let me answer the questions for you.
Does this have anything to do with our wildland contract?
No, completely separate. All right, so that is the end of the presentation, I'll get to the formality part now. So it is, we went over the background through the presentations, the recommendation, staff recommends that City Council introduce Council Bill 0202502 on first reading and set the second hearing to, and we're gonna make a correction to this, to June 10th, 2025, to adopt the ordinance thereby accepting and implement the updated California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection CAL FIRE Local Responsibility Area LRA maps for Loma Linda. Do we have to make a motion?
Well, we got, we have, it's a public hearing, so we have to open the public hearing. Scott? Okay, seeing nobody else running forward, we'll close the public hearing and then we can entertain a motion.
Am I allowed to complain that this picks on District 5?
Ovi and I will warmly welcome any of you other districts when the fires happen again to our houses.
Don't look forward to the flood. Are we good?
Darb's trying to move it. Can we have a first? If we don't move it?
Second.
We'll get a nasty letter from the governor's office.
Well, since you introduced this by telling us we had to approve it, then you can attach my name as a second.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So motion is to introduce Council Bill O-202502 on first reading, set the second reading to June 10th, 2025, amending the municipal code to establish the fire hazard severity to establish the fire hazard severity zone section in Chapter 32 of Title 15, which is building and construction of the Loma Linda Municipal Code. I will take your vote, please. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. We're going into Section 3 and the consent calendar.
Move it.
Second.
A first and a second, Madam Clerk.
There's one item on the consent calendar regarding the contract for the Sheriff's Department that you may have to abstain, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so let's remove that one. Can I get another motion to remove 3D first? And another second?
Okay.
No, we do.
She did.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't get who made the second.
Rhonda.
To remove? Okay.
I think it was to remove and to, to move the rest of the calendar.
Okay, so motion is to remove Agenda Item 3D from the consent calendar that we will take a separate motion on that item.
Yep.
So please vote. Motion carries. So now we can take a vote for the consent calendar items minus the item 3D.
Move 3D.
No, we have to go back and do the consent calendar now. It wasn't included in the original motion. It was just a motion to remove the item. So it's the consent calendar now.
So he moved it, I'll second it.
So motion is to approve the consent calendar minus item 3D. Please vote. Estimate, uh, approve as a, as submitted. Motion carries. Thank you. So now we can take a motion on item 3D, which is approving the contract agreement, numbers 94 dash 523, Amendment 36 for the Law Enforcement Service contract.
I'll move it.
Second.
Same motion is to approve item 3D. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, uh, now we're on to old business, 4A. This is the second reading of our Development Code Amendment to allow wholesale landscape nursery as a conditionally permitted use within the high-density residential R3 zone.
I'll move the second reading.
And I second it with all the language that's in the staff proposal.
I did receive a second by Councilmember Spencer Wong.
You guys are quiet.
Excuse me. So motion is to, is to adopt Council Bill O dash 202501, waiving the full reading of the ordinance and reading the adopted ordinance by title, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, amending in part Title 17 zoning, Chapter 17.32 Residential Zones of the Loma Linda Municipal Code to allow landscape nurseries wholesale in Table 2-1, with a note restricting the use of FEMA-designated flood hazard areas subject to Chapter 19.12 Flood Control Measures. Excuse me, please, oh. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, any reports of council members? Reports of officers?
Yes, um, on the agenda is the, uh, onboard, setting a date for the onboarding workshop, the Brown Act presentation and all that. The dates staff had asked about in, uh, May were not, um, you, you all were not able to attend, so we're here to pick out new dates. So my first suggestion would be June 4th. That's a Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month. No?
13th, after graduation.
Okay, I didn't go that far. Okay, the regular meeting is, oh, is not June 17th. That's a third Tuesday. June 17th. It's also my birthday, but I'm happy to hang out with you gentle, uh, people for the evening. The, um.
What about the 18th?
The 18th would be Planning Commission. What about the following? The 25th?
Wednesday?
Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the 25th, that's the fourth Wednesday?
Yeah.
The, the only thing to note is if we have a second meeting, it would be June 24th, the day before.
What time would it start?
That's up to you all.
Because on the 25th, I have a committee meeting at 5:00 that potentially goes for an hour to an hour and a half.
Well.
24th works better for me as well.
We have City Council if we do a second meeting.
Well, we may not have that second meeting, but could we do it early before a City Council meeting?
Yeah.
Sure, because we should, we should be through with the closed session. Well.
Not for sure.
Closed sessions can go after.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, that's fine.
I like that because.
It, it's only going to be about 45 minutes, but probably should allow an hour, hour and 15 minutes. Maybe 5:45? Or 5:30? I don't know, you may have more questions.
Yeah, 5:30.
5:30, okay.
Okay.
5:30 on June 24th. Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving into the housing authority. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on a housing authority item? Why did you smile, Scott? You're just, you're, you're bringing attention. Like, I, I think you need to say something. Okay, you're not going to do it. So, uh, we'll move on to our consent calendar.
Move it.
Second.
Second by Dr. Daly.
Councilmember Spencer Wong.
She's just too quiet, I, I can't hear.
Come on, Rhonda, you've got more oomph than that, I know.
I think.
Harder hearing at this end of the table.
Says that the second has to go to the chair, not to the person running the device.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar item as submitted. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any old business, new business, reports of members or reports of officers? Seeing none, we are adjourned.